On to number 15, Boards and Commissions Appointment Process, which was continued from the March 5 meeting.
So, good evening, council members. This is my first presentation to you. I hope it goes well. If you can see on the slides, then I have to thank our city manager and our team. Whoa, mine's stapled together. We were talking about the Boards and Commission Appointment Process and planning Economic and Development Commissions. We've done quite a bit of background. I'm going to take this out of the binder because it was stapled together. I think it was just to challenge me on the presentation. So, the current appointment process was established in 1992. There's documentation in the back of this staff report that we have currently, which was nice. We approved the assignments at the last hearing, our last council meeting. Two council members assigned to an ad hoc, and at this moment, it's the mayor and the vice mayor. We went through, next slide, thank you. Can you hear me?
Can you just move the microphone a little closer to you?
Let me move this over.
You don't need to be real close, but like the tip of that has to be there.
Is that better?
That is better.
Thank you. Next, thank you. So, with a lot of consideration and review, we went, Terrell did, the city of Leeds, she requested for various different types of models that are being utilized. And city manager Diana Langley and I went through all of those. And we came through for three options to be considered. The first option is a model that the city of Walnut is utilizing. And what happens at that city is that each council member appoints one commissioner, each to the planning, and one to the economic development. And the process is that the council members individually review the applications and submit their first and second choices nominations to the city clerk. The city clerk's office then compiles a list of nominees, starting with the mayor's nomination, and then the vice mayor's, and followed by the remaining council members. Appointments are made in open public meetings. So, there's a process for everyone to see how the process is actually working. So, in that option, it would be, you know, each of us have one, and perhaps I think the mayor, depending on some of the, because there's seven, right? You would get two or whoever that person would be. Can we go to the next option? The Palo Alto model has a full council decides which applicants to interview. So, they get a full council conducts interviews, the council makes the appointments. So, when we were first elected, the conversations were, you know, do other city councils have open meetings? And do the entire council actually interview the potential candidates? And I was informed that no, that no one else does that. But then we start looking at different, not by the city staff, but, you know, that it was not happening by other cities. But as you can see, the other cities are doing it this way. The second, the final option is a hybrid model, which I'm hoping that you consider this as a hybrid, or, you know, there's other opportunities. Each council member recommends two appointments to the Planning and Economic Commission. If an interview is required, then it goes to the full council, and we conduct them in open session. Most meetings that are happening within the Planning or the Economic Development Commission, they're open sessions. You know, people hopefully go to their meetings. And then list of nominees for each commission will be presented to the city council for confirmation and appointment by the majority of the council. Next slide. Other items for discussion, I would hope that maybe to consider is changing the terms to two years, limiting appointments to three to two years for a total of six years, and that no person holding any other elected appointed office can serve on the commission, and no person can serve more than one commission. This is an opportunity, hopefully, to invite a wider variety of folks to join our commissions. Again, I just want to reiterate, this is, and it's been clear, it's a city council commission. It is not just a one person, or two persons, or three persons unless it's a majority. Then final slide is on the Economic Development Commission. As we are looking at our goals and priorities, much discussion has been made on the, how our business is growing, our business is sustaining, are we increasing revenue, what is our plan? So, increasing the number of commissioners from five to seven, increased meeting frequencies, these are items that have already been discussed freely in other council meetings. Have the planning commission also serve as the economic development? This is done in other cities. I'm not necessarily favoring the entire idea on that one, but reevaluate the Economic Development Commission and the city's relationship with the Economic Development Corporation. In talking with other comparable cities in our community, in our region, and of our, not Yuba County, but others in our region, our Economic Development Corporation is actually well-regarded in northern states. So, I have received that feedback. So, I recommend the hybrid. That's the option that I'm hoping that you would consider. But there is an option to change none of it and leave it as is. That is another option that is not in the slide, and continue as business as usual. So, these are my suggestions to the full council. And if you have any questions, I'm here to listen and work through it.
Still writing my questions?
Still writing your questions?
I got one, starting off. You made a suggestion of two-year terms and no more than six years total. We just had a great man retire from the Planning Commission that gave us 12 years of his life. He was a great person. He did a lot for the community. He was there. He was an attorney. He did things for us that, you know, I thought, when I was, I've been watching these planning commission meetings for the last three and a half years. I thought things were easy thing, just walk in, aye, we're out of here. And he'd go off and ask questions. And after him asking these questions, I realized that he, you know, made me even more knowledgeable than what I thought should have been just everybody say aye and get out of here. And a very, very intelligent man. And I think if we have other people like that on our planning commission, you know, six years, you're out. If he's doing a great, if the person's doing a great job, they can stay, if they're doing a great job, it's up to council. We're the ones that could say, you're out or you're in. If someone's doing a great job, I don't think six years, you're out. You have to, you know, wait two years and reapply. I don't think that's right. So, that's the only thing that I have that I really wanted to speak about, the two years. And then we're going to be interviewing, the council's going to be interviewing every 18 months. So, it's going to be paperwork for staff. We're going to be, it's going to be every 18 months, two years, every 18 months, because we've got to get somebody set for the next two years. So, it's going to be a lot of time consuming. You get people trained. It's not, going into a planning commission, there's some knowledge, but there's always a learning process. And, you know, the first two years, or one to two years, it's a learning process, and you just get involved and get going, and then boom, you're out, or someone else is coming in new, so we start all over again. So, myself personally, I like it just the way it is. It's been a great thing through all these years. We haven't had any issues. I'm saying if we had issues, I would think about council member Espinola's suggestions. But myself personally, we've had no issues. We've done great for the community, great for the city, and I'd like to keep it just the way it is. And then on the economic development part, I do agree with Mayor Harris. I would like to bump it up to seven folks. Let's make it just like a planning commission meeting. And, you know, our economic development, I've been to all the meetings there. I've only missed one in the last two and a half years of that also. They've done great things. You know, when you're in a recession, it's kind of tough getting folks to come here. We're getting out of it. We have a good group. And she was talking about the economic commission, not commission, the economic development that we have. I don't want to be mean, but, you know, what have they done for Wheatland, Live Oak, Marysville? I mean, you've got Yuba County because they have the infrastructure, they have the space. But, you know, it's, I think our economic commission has done just as well and even better. So, that's just my comments.
I have a couple of questions, Councilwoman. If I might, one of the slides indicated that if a person was holding office someplace else, they couldn't serve. And the only question I have is, currently on our Yuba City Planning Commission, we have a representative from the Sutter County Planning Commission, which I think is beneficial. This would not preclude that, would it?
Correct. Yeah, it would not preclude that.
Okay. The rest are just sort of statements? As a former planning commissioner applicant? No, I wasn't selected. That's why I'm sitting here today. Thanks, Dan.
I think you're doing better.
I'm not opposed to the process that involves an open meeting for the interview of potential planning commissioners. I've heard it say, well, that might discourage that. You know, I'm not in a position to say whether I believe that or not. I am in a position to say that I don't think it will impact that. I think people who want to be planning commissioners will go through the process regardless of whether they're sitting in the mayor's office with two people, or they're sitting in front of the five of us. That's been my experience, anyway. I am concerned that planning commissioners don't necessarily always reflect changes as the council changes. And I had the good occasion to talk to Mr. Eider one evening, and he asked me what my concerns were, and that was one of them, is I'm elected and I inherit a planning commission. And that planning commission may be aligned with the thoughts that the council has, and there again, they may be holdovers that aren't aligned. So, I am interested in trying to figure out a method by which the council is more engaged with the selection process, just to ensure that there is some continuity and alignment with goals and objectives of the city. And I do know we have the ability to remove planning commissioners, but I prefer not to get into that awkward situation if it wasn't absolutely necessary. As far as the Economic Development Commission, I agree with, I think both of my colleagues on the left and the right are indicating an expansion of the Economic Development Commission. The one I don't agree with at this point is having the planning commission serve as the Economic Development Commission. I think there is a benefit to having the Economic Development Commission be a different representative body than planners. With that being said, I will wait for other comments from my colleagues.
Through the mayor, I'm the other colleague. I guess where I struggle with part of this is the sense that we are not part of the process under current. As we went through the process this year, we all saw the applications by all the applicants for all the commissions, and we had a chance to review them and provide feedback to the mayor and vice mayor before they went into interviews. The second check and balance is we got the list of the people that were chosen, and we had the ability in open session to recommend they be polled for further discussion. So, there is checks and balances, and I feel like, right now through those, I am represented. I concur with Councilmember Boomgarden that, you know, expansion, five to seven, but not dual-purpose serve. They need to be two separate commissions. I do share the concern about a council, which this council has drastically changed from the last one, but yet we inherit the different, some of the different commissions that may not exactly embrace where this council's going as of yet. But I think we correct that or transfer that vision through education of their purpose and what their goals are, and the fact that they are an extension of this council, that they're not their own entity, that there is a checks and balance through this entire local government. They have implied authority from the council, but at any time, which we're working on the ordinances now with planning commission, we've had some contentious issues, and it would have been much easier for the council to just pull those issues straight up. But likewise, if the planning commission has issues before them that are really contentious, they can send them directly to us so that they don't have to be appealed. I did reach out to a couple of people that were in the last pool, just to find out, you know, would it have deterred them from sitting in a room with other people, being openly interviewed? And while I think very strong people, people like our retiring planning commission, who is used to being in a court of law and speaking his mind for a lot of years, would have no problem. But for the person that's wanting to get engaged in their civic duty and their government as a first step, it might be a major deterrent. And going back to past practices of previous council members, we've had people stand before here that were nominated for positions and basically be berated in a very unprofessional manner. And we have to be cognizant of that because that was very unprofessional, that was done by prior council members, and that deters people from coming before us right now. We're still building back that trust with the public to let them know this is a new council, and we're open to it. I personally like the current system we have. I think we can, you know, expand, like we said, for the economic. I don't think this is the end of the discussion, but I don't feel like there's a need for change at this point, because I do think that the open interviews would be a deterrent. And I think this needs to be looked at over a longer period of time and see, as the culture changes, maybe we can introduce open interviews. But I just think right now that would be a very negative, negative thing. So, that's my comments at this time.
I just wanted to say one more thing. The planning commission, they have a set of rules. I know, yes, they do work for us. You know, we have, council has thoughts and goals that we'd like to have, but they have a little handbook, just like we receive when we became council members. And they have a set of rules that they uphold, and they do checks and measures, is what their goal is. They obey the policy, or, you know, make sure that the policy is taken care of properly. And then they make the judgment, making sure that all the X's are crossed, or the T's are crossed and the X's are slashed, and then brings it to us. They make the decision, bring it to us, and that's us to make decisions, say, yes, that's a great decision, or no, we could say no and have it changed. But like I said, the planning commission is a great bunch of folks. They've done great things the last three years that I've been with them, watching them. I just, like I said, we have different thoughts here in the future, but, you know, they are upholding the policies and the regulations of the city, and they're bringing the projects to us as they're coming in front of them and then bringing them to us. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that in the fact-finding process, because it was an extensive fact-finding process. It wasn't just a two-week turnaround kind of, you know, here's a procedure. I do understand the, or I'm hearing, the preference to keep the current process that's in place. I'm not saying that we're changing our commissioners this go-around, but there is a need to strengthen the involvement of our economic development commissioners, and not always, and correct me, Darren, because you and I had a conversation about this, that our commissioners engaged in the development of, and so I had, I did a lot of research, and I talked with a lot of community members, commissioners that also were, or potential candidates that were considered. And so, it just depends on the person and their desire to be, you know, in this part of our community with, as a commission. And Vice Mayor Cardosa, I see your point where you're saying that, you know, maybe it's too quick of a turnaround for six years. And all of these examples, all of that that is listed, is other cities are doing this. I'm not bringing forth anything that isn't part of another city. And in that, strengthening the roles of our commissioners, engaging, having them become the extension of us is important. And that's why I've been requesting this particular review. And if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. I have absolutely, this is not a personal issue for me. This is of a governance and trying to do, again, what's right for this community. And I would like to bring it back forth. If it gets turned down now, I'll be back knocking on the door with this one again because this is, if we don't see potentially good changes in the next six months on this, give it a timeframe. Let's see how far this, how well our planning commissioners and our economic development and our other commissions. Let's have them do a report in six months and see how well they're coming along, because I want to not just have a check and balances, I also want to have actions and results. So, that's the end goal.
Good. Through the mayor, artistic to follow up on one of the comments that Councilwoman Shaw made, and just to understand the process, and this probably goes back, unfortunately, to you, Diana, too. Is there, other than the ad hoc committee of the mayor and the vice mayor, there's really no other process? It just, the applications go to that board. They were sent out to the council this time. Is that a past practice as well? And is there the mechanism by which the council people, as they did in this case, or some did in this case, provide feedback up to the ad hoc committee? Is that memorized anywhere? Again, I hesitate to say that because Councilwoman Espinola is probably going to get mad at me for more process, but that was an opportunity to engage ahead of the appointment process.
Correct. It's not a policy that, you know, you bring it back. It's up to council whether they want to talk to the mayor or the vice mayor. You just have to remember that it's a Brown Act if more than two of you talk at the same time.
But as far as the potential to add a, to formally add, the applications for these commissions will be given to the city council members in advance of the interviews, and then the responsibilities on those council people to get feedback to the ad hoc committee.
Correct.
So, I guess I would throw that out to this group. Is that something you want to consider to help the council feel more engaged with the process than currently exists? I'm not suggesting that you didn't do that. You did. But there's nothing that says, vice mayor will do it this year, or I'll do it the following year, or Councilwoman Shaw, and so on and so forth. So, just something to think about or discuss.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if they provide feedback, they have the applications, provide feedback, one-way feedback, no Brown Act?
And you see me thinking about this.
I stumped him.
Yeah, because if all four council members are providing feedback to the mayor, the mayor would be knowing how they would likely vote.
Okay.
That's the problem. I think that runs into a Brown Act issue. What they could do is they could provide that feedback in open session, so you wouldn't have a Brown Act issue. However, it would be an open session.
Okay.
How about council member goes to the manager, no names involved? Can that be circulated, like, can that be done, not considered a Brown Act? With no names involved, you just have a council member, like we get weekly things, questions being asked, that way all council's aware of questions being asked, in case it comes and asks you, we don't duplicate ourselves or triple or whatever. Would that be like the same thing? The council member will not be named, just the questions being asked concerning the commissioner?
Almost. We have to take care. Has to do with the way information is flowing to and from the council. So, staff can give information to the city council at any time, and it's not a violation of the Brown Act. A member may ask a question of staff, saying, hey, I have a question about X, Y, and Z. And if they respond generally to the city council, that may be public information, which is one of the reasons that staff is providing the agenda memo, so the public knows what is being asked of the city council and what information staff is providing to them. Once you start getting information coming back the other direction, as long as it doesn't involve more than one council member, you're fine. But the question is, is once it gets to the city manager, what's the city manager going to do with that information? Because at some point, the city manager would be turning around and giving it to the mayor or whoever else is making that determination. And if that happens in anything other than an open session, it could run afoul of the Brown Act.
I think the same thing would be, even if I don't know the names, I still know what the majority opinion is. That would be a problem. All right.
I think council just has to trust the mayor and vice mayor to make the best decision.
All right. So, we have a lot of things going on here. From my two cents, I am of the opinion that the current procedure as it stands is effective. It's proven, it's worked fine for years. And while I appreciate other cities, something different may work for them. Doesn't necessarily mean we're doing it wrong. I think it works just fine. There is checks and balances. I too was of the opinion that if you want to sit up here as a member of planning commission, you shouldn't be afraid to sit up here and ask to be on the planning commission, until I talked to a few people who said they would not have applied if it was like that. So, now I'm kind of at a wash, right? It brings me back to, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think it works fine. I've sat on both sides. When I applied to be on the planning commission, I've sat on the other side when I've appointed people planning commission. We do have, again, checks and balances, because it does come before our entire council. And the intent is, or the hope is, that if someone is not approved, for lack of a better term, that they're done so respectfully and professionally. To change a process or add a few layers under the assumption that it's not, that's not going to happen, I think, doesn't give us enough credit up here as elected officials, professional elected officials. So, my vote will be no on the change. However, I do, as been stated, agree with increasing our Economic Development Commission from five members to seven. Results from them, expecting more results from them, putting more responsibility on them, we all ran on a platform of economic development. And I think we have a tool there at our disposal that we can use and leverage and communicate with them and encourage them and empower them and give them some expectations, a clear strategic plan, if you will, some goals. And I think we have a really good tool, and we add a couple more members to that, key members in the community with some business, since we can really make a big difference, not only locally but regionally, and I look forward to that. So, whatever the hybridized version of that, I'm not sure how we can, in the form of a motion, however, that's my position. I can appreciate and understand the needs for perhaps a different approach. However, I think it's good as it stands, and it serves its purpose, it served its purpose well for this city. And then again, the additional members to the economic development. And that would be it for me.
I respectfully disagree with the economic development part of it and our planning. We've only had like no more than 30 permits here in the last year. So, considering that that part of our community is poor in the sense of not meeting, so to expand to the economic, expand the Economic Development Commission is a great idea. Are we still going to use the same format? Or are you going to go through and pick the applicants that you have? Are you going to identify two people from that pool and then recommend them to us to come forward if we adopt this?
Yes.
So, then we will have an opportunity, because unfortunately, you were not here at the last. So then we will have an opportu, because unfortunately you were not here at the last and.
Boy, I wish I could have been.
I know, I know, I know. Yet the opportunity to give feedback and about each candidate was not offered. It was put together and won some, everyone had to make a, a motion on the entire pool of candidates. And so I'm just pointing out, you know, very.
I misunderstood that you're, can you say it again?
So the entire pool of candidates, the people that were recommended for the various commissions, it was all, all or none, all one motion. Well, playing, working on the team, I didn't want to, you know, so I thought I'd give the opportunity to have this conversation, you know, to do it differently. But it's clear that that's not a, a choice at this moment. Because it wa, it's not favor, it's disrespectful in a way, like you said, to pull out and there's been history where, you know, candidates were disrespectfully in the community, disrespected in the community, the way that the process worked. So be it, I just want to clearly, okay, clearly state that that's how that motion was done when you were not here.
So the suggestion would be change it to approve new members of a board or commission on an individual board or commission basis rather than summary?
I'm requesting, as we work through the process of this.
Think that's what you're saying?
Yes. I would be happy to at least, you know, have some give so we can move forward.
I think that's reasonable, because if you have a problem with one particular person on one commission, but not everybody else, then you're kind of stuck. Is what you're saying?
Well, it's pretty much how it is.
For example, right?
Respectfully, that's what it is.
I think that's reasonable.
It is, it is that way now.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things that I'm just trying to figure out over here as, as we're walking through this. It's not about not having your voice heard. It was one motion. We could have pulled anybody out for further discussion if we'd have wanted to and it's, you have the discussion, you have it in a respectful manner. It's not the process, it was the person that misused the process previously from this dais. That's the problem. So you can still have the discussion and not recommend someone and it go before the council and you still do it in a very respectful way and share your concerns. So, so that, that part, I want to be clear, we did have, we truly did have our opportunity, even though it was one motion, we could have bifurcated it very simply. I'm still back to the comment and you'd keep talking about measurable results and you keep focusing on Planning Commission and a number of permits and you talked about the economic development. Their jobs are very, very limited. And the reason this economy has come to a stalemate is not by the policies that have been created by those two commissions, it's been policies and procedures that's been set by previous council. They enforce what the previous council does. That's your impact fees. That is, you know, we talked about it in our goals and plannings, being business friendly. They're an extension of us, but they simply carry out our wishes. And so to, if, you know, right now, the five of us own it. If this economy is not growing, doesn't matter what was done prior, we own it and we're trying to fix it. And we realize it's not growing, but I don't want us to put undue expectations on either of these two commissions of, if they're not producing in six months, but we haven't done anything in our power to give them the tools to do that, to start pulling people off of commissions because they haven't produced, the box stops and starts with us. And I, that's, that's where I bring it back to, and I'm not quite following the mechanism below because their success falls squarely on our shoulders. We inherited what we inherited from the prior council and we own it. We've got to fix it and then we got to give these commissions time to, to do their job.
Council Shaw, Councilmember Shaw, I am not disagreeing that who owns is. So please, I ask, do not misconstrue what I am saying, okay? Because I pointed out an example of an issue of what is public, we were in a public workshop that the community was invited to hear about those numbers. And it's not, the, the measurable outcomes that I'm asking is attend, meeting the guidelines of what the responsibility of the commissions are. Attendance, following the rules, those are the measurable things that I'm talking about. Okay? So I'm, I'm understanding what their roles are. But at the same time, in speaking with other jurisdictions similar to ours, learning how they've been able to produce outcomes and actions based on commissions. And maybe this isn't the appropriate time to have this, you know, whole further discussion, but I don't, I want you to hear me that I'm not meshing those two. But in my research, in my research, I found that those need to be effective, both separately or together. And the council, we are the leaders. And what is done is done and I'm trying to find ways to change policy, to bring forward the policy and not go further than that. So I'm working on the policy issues. That is what I was elected for and that's what I'm doing.
Your motion.
Call of the public.
Where did I, where did you get that? Tony, come on up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. As far as the length of a term, I think two years is absolutely way too short. It takes a while to learn your job. And if you're basically a two-year person, you're not going to be able to do that job in that, in that time period. As far as the number of terms, I think that should be based on how the people are doing. If you've got a great performer, why would you term him out? You can. As far as anybody who's not performing, I would think that the council would try to remove that person. So yeah, I, as a person, as a citizen who did apply for the Planning Commission position a year ago, I guess, maybe a little longer than that, and I was not selected, and it's probably a good thing that I wasn't because there's an awful lot of work involved in that and a lot of expertise. And to be frank, I was not the right guy for the job. So the, the interview I had with the mayor and the vice mayor was very candid, very informal, and led me to the, the conclusion that I was not the right person and I told them right then, you know, I'm not the right guy for the job. So, and you know, I understand the concern about the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Commission, and I hope this doesn't go to any other commissions because I'm on a couple of them right now and it was sort of unanimous that nobody wanted to go through a public inquisition, you know, as a returning member. And if that were to happen, you'd find a, you know, one, at least one of your commissions without anybody on it. And I don't think you want to go that way. So as, as far as, whoops. Oh, as far as implementing policy, that's their job. And I heard it said up here that, you know, you guys have to set that policy. So you can't expect anything from them without changing the parameters under which they work. So I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, come on up.
My name is Dale Ilar, I live at 2261 Drum and Drive, and I am a planning commissioner. And the only thing that I concur actually with what Tony, the last gentleman, just said, the, the thing that I really wanted to reiterate was the, the two-year mark for Planning Commission, and I'm not sure about the other commissions, but just from my own experience. So you're going to be asking, potentially asking someone that has served for one year to, to, to be, to lead that commission, the Planning Commission, after they've only been on there for, for one year. And I think that would be, that'd be very difficult for someone to come up and, and do that with only one year's experience. It's, if you have two-year terms, that is. So that was just one comment that I had with respect to that. So anyway, and, and my other comment was obviously however you guys and gals want to choose the Planning Commission, I honestly believe that should realistically totally be up to you, whatever, whatever direction you want to go. So good luck. And I hope it works. It's, it seems to be working as, I mean, we have a pretty good Planning Commission anyway. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Being said, I will entertain any motions.
Before I make a motion, on the economic development part, I know we're looking at going from five to seven and we want to go nights. Do I need to mention that or just five to seven and we'll just set the rules afterwards? We want to make this motion?
Yeah, if all you wanted to do is address the economic development, you could just make a motion and increase it from five to seven, come back with a ordinance for council approval on that, and then you could set the nights by their own rules. So for example, if the council decided to change its meeting nights, they would, to a night that they're on, they would bump their nights, so it wouldn't need to be official.
Okay. Well, right now they're three o'clock in the afternoon, we'd like to make them nights, that way everybody can attend and the public also, because three o'clock in the afternoon is hard for the public to attend.
You can, you can put that in the ordinance if you want, that they shall meet in the evenings.
So right now, on my recommendation, I'm just going to add, I want to make it from five to seven, and then we'll change it afterwards.
Sure. It's, oh yeah, yeah, no stop time. Mr. Gale is absolutely correct. We, you want to start time, but you don't want to stop time.
Right.
Okay. So we can come back, if that's your, if that's council's direction, we'll just come back with an ordinance, you can set the exact times that you want and the exact numbers.
So on the first motion, I would like to make a recommendation for the Economic Development Commission to raise it from five to seven members. And I would like starting time, 6:00 PM. What days do we have it on, Darren? On Wednesdays. So as long as it's not affecting any other committees.
Not every Wednesday.
No, it's not every Wednesday, it's once a month Wednesday.
So which one?
Yes, I'm going to let him tell me. Yeah, so we have to do the first or the third. Does the third sound good, Darren?
We can return with that information.
Okay. So then I'd like to make a motion to raise the economic division from five members to seven. And do, then then the planning would be a second motion or is that could be all in one, sir?
You can either do it all in one or you can just do it one motion at a time.
Okay, I'll do that one motion at this time.
So you have a motion to raise the membership numbers of the Economic Development Commission from five to seven members?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very well.
And then on the Planning Commission, I'd like to keep it just the way it is.
Motion on the floor to not make any changes to the appointment process for the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
And we do not have a motion?
Do, we don't, if we're not changing anything, we do not need a motion.
Thank you very much, I'm tired.
Okay.
And thank you for ever said that out there, too.
Either way works.
So what we have is, do we have a motion to even change anything, first of all?
No.
Okay. Then topic is closed. Moving on to, and thank you for that.